I'd like to call to order the Monday, April 17th, 2025 meeting of the Granville County Board of Commissioners. Thank you everyone for coming out tonight, and I hope those who wanted to speak during public comments have signed up. And with that, we'll go to our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Rob Woolford.
Let us pray, please. Gracious God, we thank you for the gift of this day and for the opportunity to gather in service to our community. Grant us wisdom in our decisions, compassion in our discussions, and unity in our purpose. Bless every resident of our county, and may our actions tonight reflect your guidance and love. Keep us mindful of the trust placed in us and strengthen us to lead with humility and grace. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Now, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, could we move item 13 to the consent agenda, making that the ninth item on the consent agenda for tonight?
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about a board on this issue? If not, we'll move for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Ayes have it, motion carries. And now could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Put Chairman off motion to approve this consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Ayes have it, motion carries. And our next item on our agenda is recognition, recognitions and presentations. And the first one we have is a proclamation honoring Granville County's 911 telecommunicators.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Hicks, proclamation honoring Granville County 911 telecommunicators for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 13th through 19th, 2025. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, requiring immediate response from law enforcement, fire or emergency medical services. And whereas 911 telecommunicators serve as the critical first point of contact, obtaining essential information, providing lifesaving instructions, and ensuring the swift dispatch of first responders. And whereas the safety of first responders depends on the accuracy and efficiency of telecommunicators who monitor their activities, provide critical updates, and coordinate emergency efforts. And whereas the dedicated telecommunicators of Granville County Emergency Communications demonstrate professionalism, composure under pressure, and a commitment to public safety, often working long hours, nights, weekends, and holidays, and I might say many hours away from your family. Whereas these unseen heroes contribute significantly to the protection of life, the apprehension of criminals, the suppression of fires, and the treatment of patients in need. And whereas the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 13th through 19th, 2025, recognizes the invaluable service of 911 professionals and their vital role in emergency response. Now therefore, the Granville County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 13th through 19th, 2025 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Granville County in honor of the men and women whose dedication and professionalism keep our county and our citizens safe. Thank you.
And I'd like to present y'all with this proclamation, a copy of it, signed and framed. And thank you, thank you for all that you do. Terry, you want more pitches? Let's get everybody up front here. We'll stay behind you. You're the stars. You okay? You good? And I'd like to call forward the Veterans Committee, the leader, and all those who are being recognized tonight. Hey Mike, how you doing?
Where you want to say?
Anywhere you want to. I have to tell you guys, I've only known this guy for 65 years. Actually, it's September be 65 years because we started first grade together at Wilton School. So when you say you've known somebody all your life?
Pretty much.
We've known each other all our lives. It's always good to see you, Mike. Thank you so much. And our first, our first presentation is a certificate recognition. Let me get the coin right. To Judy Smith for outstanding service to the Granville County Veterans Affairs Committee. Thank you so much. And thank you.
I'm David Song, the chair of the committee. These folks have worked many, many years to help veterans in this county, over 30 years combined. The committee's only 10 years old, and the work that gets done for the veterans in this county probably exceeds most counties in the state. And it's because of these guys and the work they've done to set things up. Judy, you've been there a long time too. So we thank you. And so we have individual awards from both the county and the committee to thank them and recognize them for their work.
Thank you. And a certificate of recognition to Mr. Gerald Seibert for outstanding service to the Granville County Veterans Affairs Committee. Mr. Seibert, thank you so much for everything you do. Oops, got to get it right. Sorry. Thank you, Terry. And now Mr. Charles Miller. We certificate of recognition and thank you for your outstanding service to the Granville County Veteran Affairs Committee. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do for us, our veterans. Thank you, Charles. Now you don't have any more hands, do you? And I say my longtime friend to last. Mike, you do so much for not only the city of Creighton, but Granville County in so many different ways. And we can't thank you enough. And thank you for all you do for the Veterans Committee and for your long-term service. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, James. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mike, thank you. Learned a lot from you too. Learned a lot from all four of you, but appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
As a commissioner who works with you on this board, I can tell you this is the, careful how I say this, but I really work hard to find a better and more committed county board. They raise their own money. They keep up with their own money. They're, do a fabulous job for our veterans and those that have made sacrifices. Many of them who, all of them are veterans, by the way, and they have also made those personal commitments a long time ago and continue to serve their fellow brothers and sisters. Thank you for your service.
If I might make a comment, I would, this would not be complete if I didn't recognize a couple of other people. Ann Williams, Ann, please stand up. Ann's our secretary for many, many years while I was chairman. Lynn, Lynn Breeze Thatcher, Lynn, stand up, please. And we have two other committee members I see, Alan Strickland and Ronnie Boyd. Will y'all stand up just a second, please? And last but not least, AJ Spees. AJ's our Veteran Service Officer for Granville County. Harriet, Harriet, please stand up. Harriet and Sandra. Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you all. And as usual, Mike, you dress better than me. And now is the sheriff here? Yes, there you are. You have, our sheriff has his presentation and some remarks.
Let me get it right. Good evening. First, give an honor to God for all the grace and mercy he shows us. We bring you greetings from the Granville County Sheriff's Office to where we're committed to the safety of not just the public, but the inmate population who are children's fathers, brothers, mothers, and sisters of people that live in this county. So tonight I come before you in recognition of the life work that our staff do. A lot of people think the jail is just a place where people go and we have no care and compassion about them. A lot of people think the detention facility is just another place to hold the inmates awaiting adjudication. It's more than that. And tonight we celebrate the individuals that serve in that capacity. So I'll bring you our partner, Ms. Natasha Green, who is with Southern Health Partners, to bring you up to speed to why we're here.
Hello. So we're here tonight to recognize one of the shifts that went above and beyond to save an inmate's life. Most time we see custody staff where they freeze in situations like this. In this moment, we did not have anyone that froze, and they all lent a helping hand in saving this inmate's life. We don't take that for granted. We greatly appreciate it. Although our nerves come in fully, you know, trained to do what they're supposed to do, it's also very great to have staff that can step in and assist while we wait for EMS and different things of that nature to come in. So what rotation are you guys? This is B rotation of day shift. They are under Chief Robertson. I first want to thank him for whenever there's a need of anything regarding medical equipment and supplies that we need in the jail. Far so often, we have, you know, counties where they don't want to give us AEDs. Those are things that we need in the jail for lifesaving measures. We have AEDs, we have EpiPens, we have Ambu bags, we have O2 concentrators, we have O2 tanks. We have everything on hand readily available to save someone's life. We have Captain Terry, who we would like to award, who assisted with lifesaving measures. We have Sergeant.
Chair, you want to get him up here?
All right. So this certificate is from Southern Health Partners. It's a lifesaving award in recognition of Captain Shamika Terry, who showed valence, effort, fortitude, and willpower in saving of one's life with intrepid and unfaltering care through their actions. A life has been saved, and many have been changed for the betterment of all. Signed Jennifer Harris Stein, President and CEO, and Katie Oops, Senior Vice President. We are presenting them with a certificate, lifesaving badge, as well as a gift certificate, and we'll be taking them to dinner. We have Sergeant Dwayne Green. We have our nurse, Kim Lewis, who is on site. We have Officer Juan Adams. We have Officer Christopher Cox. And we have Officer Talisha Taylor. We also have Sergeant Walton, who is the lead of this shift. In the process of getting the awards in, it was kind of time consuming because the sheriff wanted to do this tonight. So we do have awards coming for Sergeant Walton, Officer Harris, and Officer Burgess as well. But nonetheless, they all played a part in making sure that we had a safe turnout with this inmate.
So the story is this. We do rounds every 15 minutes on our inmate population to ensure that they're living, breathing, they're doing stuff recognizable, that they're safe. So at one point in time, an inmate in our facility was found unresponsive. When they knocked on the door, they checked on him. Staff entered into the cell, vital signs were assessed. They immediately picked him up, ran him down to our booking area, began to do chest compressions, grabbed the AED. All the ABCs that they are trained in DOC C school, they conducted. The inmate coded twice, but they brought him back to life. He is doing well. And it was a medical issue that we had to deal with. So these are the people that you hire and pay to do a job to protect the citizens, not only on the street, but inside our jails. The training that they're going through, the professionalism they display is undervalued and underappreciated by many. But I appreciate you, your commissioners do, and I'm sure we're going to continue to work well together. So Mr. Tony, let's on, Mr. May, if you would, join us on a photo with these great individuals. I'm gonna get out the way. Let Terry do his job. I'm waiting on dinner. Chief, you gonna get up there? He just run. He just a driver of the truck. They the wheels on the tank. He just drive. Thank y'all. I'm sorry we were rushed. We're at the school board meeting. It was, yeah, it was, it was good. Nice to have you here, Russell.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So again, thank y'all. Thank your community for supporting these men and women. I will just put one more thing out there. We just partnered with Little Caesars. Little Caesars is partnering with us to help do some stuff in the jail. Our inmates came together to watch a basketball game on Saturday. Because of the progressive positive behavior that they displayed, the inmate population bought over 100 pizzas from Papa John's to watch the basketball game together. Oh, Little Caesars, I'm sorry. Little Caesars. So we are working with our corporate sponsors and partners to do things in our jail. Pender County just came up and spent all their time, eight hour shift up there with us, to learn how we're doing business. Stokes County and Stanley County are going to do the same things. So other people are coming to your county to see how we manage our population. And when people come into our jail, it's like, wow, where are the inmates? But they're there doing the things that we asked them to do the right way because they're your children. They're your nieces. They're your nephews. And God says, unto the least of these, you do unto me. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff, and thank each and every one of you for all that you do. Thank you. I know it doesn't get said very often, but thank you. And our next item on our agenda tonight is our public comments. And pardon me if I butcher your name. I don't mean to. But it's just, I'm from Granville County and it shows. When I call your name, if you will, come down to the podium. And if you will, state your name for the record and your address. LaShay Barbie? Oh, and by the way, you have three minutes. Okay, good. If you will hit the green, there you go.
And thank you. It's Alicia Barbie. And I live at 3594 Deerfield Road in STEM, North Carolina. I've been a Granville County resident for 24 years. My main issue of dressing tonight is because I'm concerned about my neighborhood. We have some issues going on in our neighborhood. And the sad thing is, is that I don't hardly ever see a sheriff in our area unless we have to call him. I know that we've probably got a shortage of them. I don't know. But I do think that we need more coverage in our area. We've had shootings. We've had, actually, somebody gets shot last year. Unfortunately, as it goes to the courts, they just dismiss it or fight off. I don't know. But the problem here is that we're not getting better. I live one and a half miles from the city limits of STEM. And I'm concerned about all of my neighbors because a stray bullet doesn't have a name on it. It could go into any one of our homes. And I feel like if we could get some sheriffs in the neighborhood to drive through just once in a while, that maybe it would help stop some of it. Maybe they would think twice before they speed down the road at going 60 miles an hour on a dirt road sliding all the way up and down. We have young boys, 16 and 20, 18, they're just acting up. They've been on other people's properties. They've been toting guns on other people's properties. And I've spoke to the parents, the grandparents of these children three times, and other residents have spoken as well. And I have talked to sheriff, and then I spoke to a sergeant. And I asked him, could you please send a sheriff down once in a while? I don't need seven days a week. Once, twice a week, maybe it would help. So two weeks has gone by. So I talked to the sergeant again today because I work from home. And I actually am looking out every day where my desk is at. And he states that he sent, he actually came down there one time and he was in a marked car. I said, these people down here don't know their marked cars. They couldn't care less. They just see a car go by. They need to see an actual sheriff car drive through to show that they are law in the area. I live on the corner of Deerfield and Tally Ho, but they say it's Sanders. So I need to address that with the state. If it's Sanders, we need to have the street names changed. And so I, I see a lot of kids going to the school right by my house. And I'll be on the porch, and they're speeding side by side. And nobody's ever in the area to catch these. We really need to have some law enforcement spread out. When we do call them, because we need them, it takes them 30 to 45 minutes to get there. By the time they get there, the incident has already happened and gone. Is that my time up?
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and speaking. Blanca Leva, and please correct me. For the record, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Blanca Leva. I live on 3564 Deerfield Road in STEM. I've lived there for over 10 years, and I'm just concerned with the fact that there's been a lot of like crime on our road. And I've called 911 and I've let them know, you know, that I'm scared to go in my backyard because they're shooting really close to my backyard, and I'm just afraid that I might, you know, that one of the bullets might end up hitting me or one of my pets. And nobody has showed up ever to come talk to me about it or to just say, you know, a cop shows up. So my main issue is just, I just need law enforcement to just show up every once in a while down there, you know, when we have a concern like that. Because like I said, we have little kids down there. And it's just, it's really scary that we can't even walk, go walk down to the mailbox or even be outside because a bullet might end up hitting us. And that is just my main concern. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And Diane DeLeonardo. And again, please correct my pronunciation and state your name and address for, for the record, please.
Diane DeLeonardo, 3567 Deerfield Road. We're all in Deerfield, and I think part of the problem is we're within a mile jurisdiction from STEM. Of course, they don't cover it and try to get Granville County to come out to cover it. It's become a real issue. We've got some kids on four-wheelers have destroyed our road. Actually, it's caving in. If we need help, we probably, if an ambulance came or a fire truck, it would probably cave in. That's the condition of the road. We need help. We used to pay so much each person. I came there in 1989, November. And it was different because a few people would pay. We may have five or six pay. Now there's 35 homes in there. Some of them have people living in a camper in the yard, in the backyard. It's completely changed, and we've got lots of kids. And they don't have very much respect. And I don't know the situation, but all I know is I was sitting on my porch trying to have lunch on 3/20, March 20th. And all of a sudden, I seen a four-wheeler with them standing up on top yelling and carrying on. And a man came out the end of the drive and was coming to go out for whatever reason. I don't know if he's going to work or whatever. But they actually went to harass the driver. He had a tall truck, was very big. And he got over to try to get away from them, and they almost, within inches, went underneath his truck. They started chasing him, trying to run him off the road with a They started chasing him, trying to run him off the road with a four-wheeler, and both of them standing up, yelling obscenities and whatever, and they chased him all the way to the end of the road out to Tally Ho Road. I've never seen such behavior. And things going on, and every day I hear shooting, constantly shooting behind houses and all, across the road from me. I've got two and a half acres. I would never think of shooting, and I've got more land than the rest of them, but I am scared for the welfare of the children and the families who are living there. I've got a feeling we've got crime moving in, and possibly drugs also. So something needs to happen in Deerfield, and we need help with the road before it caves in. If we ever have emergency, we're gonna be in a terrible, terrible situation. Because I'm worried about anybody, if that road caves in, it'll prob, they'll probably be killed. And we need to get it fixed. Do what? My time's up.
Is that a private road?
Yes. Well, Jim Woollett built it, and he was supposed to go by standards, and nobody ever made him go by the standards, so Ronald Russell lived there, and several of us, we tried to buy gravel, I bought several loads of gravel and put it in there when I moved in, and we all have tried to do it. But there's nobody helping. I don't know the first thing about taking care of a road. We need somebody that knows how to help us. Or give us some help, or some kinda, we pay taxes, but we need a decent road to get in and out of our homes, so if we need medical help, we could get it. Because he's a lot of seniors, and there are a lot of sick people on that road.
Okay. Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for coming and bringing to our attention. Uh, Mr. Jerry Woodall. If you will, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jerry Woodall. I live at thirty-five sixty-two Deerfield Road, Stem, North Carolina. And I was gonna talk about the road, but she did a pretty good job of it, so I ain't got nothing to say about the road. I just like to say, whoever is in the township that we live in, I wish they would contact us and come talk to us, and let us show them what we're living in, and what kind of help we need. That's all we asked him. I mean, we pay taxes like everybody else. But I don't think we're getting no representation out of these taxes. And that's all I've got to say. God bless.
Thank you, Sheriff. We appreciate it. And, uh, Mr. Brad Oldenburg. If you will, state your name and address for the record, please.
Brad Oldenburg, sixty-five eighty-eight Huntsboro Road, Oxford. First of all, I'd like to say that it's regrettable that the sheriff, um, or representatives until just a couple of minutes ago, and a deputy came in, weren't here to hear the concerns of the citizens. And I hope the board can provide the names if they would like, and maybe someone from the sheriff's department can reach out to them and speak to them about the concerns that they have, um, that they didn't hear earlier. I'm here to speak, uh, a little bit about growth. Um, I've only been in the county for five years. Um, I moved to North Carolina six years ago, and every time I, uh, found a property or whatever, the magnet of Granville County was always drawing me in. And, uh, as I said, I've been in the county for about five years, and I absolutely love it here. I'm not naive enough to think that there's not gonna be growth, um, but I think it's bordering on getting out of control. And when I say out of control, I mean, we've got two new subdivisions being proposed within Oxford, if they can ever get their acts together and follow the law, um, in terms of, uh, annexing and rezoning, uh, for that. And there are others around the county as well. And, pardon my skepticism, but having attended many of those meetings, either online or in person, um, it doesn't sound like, um, they're, they have their act together, speaking just quite frankly. I know that there are very few levers that the county board can pull, um, in order to, um, influence and have impact. Um, however, there are, um, instances within the county, the airport, for example, um, uh, Triangle North, for example, and whatnot, am I concerned, and the sheriff's office, right? I mean, the sheriff's, this is gonna be within the, uh, city limits of Oxford, but it's still part of the county. It's gonna put a strain on them, it's gonna put a strain on all of us, um, from a facilities, infrastructure perspective, and everything else. And I'm just not confident that, um, in spite of what they're saying, they're being diligent about, um, their planning and about the possible impacts. Um, quite frankly, um, from sitting there in the meetings, it just looks like they're looking at the dollar signs, right? We're gonna get another, you know, thirteen hundred homes here, another five hundred here, and whatever, and they're just looking at those dollar signs. Hope that's not the case, but that's what it appears like. So, um, uh, I hope that, um, uh, as you communicate with them, and, uh, you learn more about what's happening there. Um, if there is something you can do or have an impact, or have a conversation, or if there are some legal things or whatever, I hope you can do that. Uh, be appreciated. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And, uh, county manager, um, most of the comments seem to be centered around the, uh, neighborhood in Stem. Can we get you to pass this on to?
We can, we can pass on, um, video clip from the meeting and the contact information to the sheriff's office, make sure that they are aware of the, the full, all of the comments that were offered tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin? Yes, please.
Well, good evening to everybody. Um, I'm your district manager, District Three representative. My name's Mark Griffin. I live right across the woods, there's a crow flies from y'all. I remember when that community was built, I've lived there sixty-five years. Um, if I give you a piece of paper with, can you write your name down for me and a telephone number? Maybe we could get together and have a meeting somewhere up there in the neighborhood of Stem, and I'd be, I'd love to hear your comments. I'll try to get the sheriff to come as well, and, and try to do something to help you with that situation. And I've got a pad up here, if I could, uh, get you to take that. Okay? I've, I've, I've got your name and telephone number on here, I, I do.
Yeah, we have the telephone numbers?
Uh, I think all the numbers are on here. Thank you. Okay, I'll be reaching out to you folks, and, and we'll see if we can come up with something.
That would be great.
All right, thank y'all. Appreciate you bringing it to my attention.
He said with the state too. I've already contacted the state. They said they wouldn't take our road.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I will look into it, and I'll be reaching out and calling you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. And now moving on to our next item of business, is, uh, purchasing. And this is a, uh, approval of the Eagleview aerial imagery contract. I think we've had a couple instances here where, uh, we've been, contract has been a, uh, work in progress.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight I am bringing you terms for an oblique aerial imagery service contract with Eagleview. Eagleview operates fixed-wing piloted aircraft to capture imagery of the county, both from the traditional overhead view as well as an oblique angled viewpoint. They then process these images into maps and data sets, and integrate them with existing county software, so that county staff can easily access the imagery along, alongside their normal workflow. This imagery will assist tax staff in identifying unlisted structures and property. It will also allow the tax office to perform assessments safely and more efficiently. Our conversations with other counties reveal that some tax offices are able to perform their assessments almost completely from their desks, and they only need to go into the field if an assessment is disputed. Enhanced aerial imagery also provides additional information for emergency communications, who can immediately pull up imagery and assess the surrounding area when disputing for, when dispatching first responders to an emergency. The service can also be invaluable in the immediate aftermath of a natural disaster. As long as we're under contract with them, Eagleview will re-fly an area for free after disaster to help emergency management assess the damage and coordinate relief efforts. Eagleview aircraft were flying over western North Carolina within days of Hurricane Helene, and their imagery assisted state and local agencies with identifying inaccessible areas well before communications were restored. County staff put out a request for qualifications earlier this year for the service, and of the two qualified bidders, Eagleview was selected due to, due to their extensive experience with North Carolin, North Carolina counties, and their ability to integrate seamlessly with existing Granville County software systems. The board authorized us to begin negotiations with Eagleview at the February third meeting. And during those negotiations, staff identified savings to bring the annual cost down from an estimated seventy thousand dollars annually down to less than forty-three thousand dollars annually. Funding in the current year is available from last salary, and future funding will be offset by the expected increase in property tax collection. So we recommend authorizing a six-year contract totaling two-hundred fifty-three thousand, one-hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty cents with Eagleview for aerial imagery services, and that the board authorize the county manager to execute the contract once finalized by the county attorney. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I do. So, it's not really posed toward David, it's posed to the board, um, county attorney and county manager, so. I understand we got Google Satellite and, and, and things like that that can, can, can bring up. It's not as precise or, or timely. I, I, I just have some hesitation approving something that, that, uh, can you tell me the differences, David, between Google Satellite and, and Eagleview? And I'll, I'll, I'll tell you why. Uh, I just have concerns that, you know, I don't want our, our citizens to feel as if, you know, um, we are, um, being too much of a big brother.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, so I don't have any images to display here, but it's not something where you can see inside of a window or, or get any sort of personal information. It is enhanced from the Google Satellite imagery. It's also run more frequently. But really, this is about being able to tell what a structure is. When you look at an overhead roof of something, you can't tell in many cases if it's a parking lot, if it's a house, if it's, uh, depending on, on where it is. So this is often just to deter, determine what the structure is and what its appropriate tax value should be.
How, how often are the, um, the images taken?
This contract is set up to, to fly every three years. Uh, some counties, many counties, once they start using the service, find it's invaluable, they fly more often than that.
Okay.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
How many other counties are actually using this now in, in North Carolina?
I think with, uh, I don't have that exact, I know it is, is many, many dozens, uh, well, well over thirty. I don't know the exact number. And, and we did speak to, to some, and they, they said that, you know, ba- basically, once they start, they, they're, they never see a need to, to stop. They, they find the service so useful.
The results have been successful?
And across departments, yes.
And you said, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna add that one of the helpful features of this service, um, is something called Change Finder. And so you can, it, it can kind of, using AI, identify structures that are there in fact, but may not be on the tax map, or may not be on, on any other records that we have. So it's important to know, for example, if first responders are going on to a property, that they have a good idea of what they're getting into, what buildings are there, what the buildings look like, how tall they are, that kind of thing. So I think the, there's sort of a combination of, of useful applications for, for local government. I do know, um, to, to be a little more specific, both Person County and Durham County have been using Eagleview for some time. Person County's experience was, um, that the, the new tax value added to the books as a result of the imagery, more than paid for, uh, the, the imagery that they purchased by a significant margin.
Would this also be helpful for nine-one-one?
Absolutely, uh, yes. When, they actually have a proprietary relationship with our, uh, nine-one-one software provider, Southern Software, and, um, when they're pulling up, when a, when a call comes in, they'll be able to pull up imagery of the, the site, uh, while they're assisting the caller.
We have our nine-one-one director here. Could I pose a question? Have you looked at this? What is your opinion, Miss Hicks?
Um, I think when we sat in the meeting, they demonstrated the product, it definitely gave us a clearer view. Um, it goes further down and closer, I guess, um, more pixels than we currently have. It allows us to see more of a three-D image. So if we're having somebody there, um, that needs to give, like, a hostage situation, and we need to see the access points at the doors or things like that, we're able to kind of zoom in and get a more on-the-ground type of feel versus a high-level flyover type. Um, it's also done more often, I think, and overall, it's a much clearer picture than we currently, we have good pictures now, but these are, if we're, if we have good now, these are more great. They're a lot more clear than what we currently have.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll just. Well, uh, again, just that, in a way, right, this is, this is a product that can benefit us for, for no kind of cash outlay for the county, except for the first year, but we anticipate that the, the remaining costs will continue to be covered by the, the product itself.
I mean, I, uh, I clearly understand the benefit in regards to all the things been mentioned. I, I do. And I hate to personalize things, but in this case, I, I, I feel like I, I'm just gonna say it. Having been on the side that, that actually executes warrants and plans for warrants and plans for worst-day scenarios, I, I get it. But then also think of the private citizen who, you know, um, doesn't want to feel as if, um, they're being hawked. And so if I understand it correctly, um, it's not a hawk-type thing, it's, uh, something that we use on, on a limited basis, and that basis would be, and, and it's not like it's photographed twenty-four-seven or anything like that. It's limited in those photography and passes. And so it, it's, it's not what you would envision looking in from an operations center, looking at something in a real-time basis, but really something put together in digital imagery that's, that's so. So that's, that's, that's my, that's, that was my concern. I just, I, I really want to make sure that should the board approve it, that, that folks don't feel like we are generating something that becomes a, uh, an extended arm of the government beyond, uh, reach. Although I will say that Mr. Rem would likely be proud of me. I did extensive research on this regarding the Fourth Amendment and, and so forth, and it, uh, the SCOTUS, uh, clearly aligns with the fact that this type of, uh, information gathering is, is clearly permitted and, and lawful.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I would add one more comment, which is that, um, what, people may imagine this being added to the county's GIS website as something that anybody could go look at. I think we've decided that the, the higher resolution data will only be available to, to law enforcement, emergency management, and so forth, so that it's, it's not out there for anybody to kind of look at whenever they want. Which does, I mean, it, it provides a modicum of, of privacy that, that wouldn't be available if we'd kind of posted all the imagery online.
And I'll add to that as well, that the tax office will only be using this based on an automated system that identifies buildings that, based on Eagleview's flight, that are not showing up on our tax rolls, so they say, hey, go into, go look at this. We think there might be a building on this property. So it's not even something where an individual is, is going through and, and reviewing this, uh, this imagery, unless something flags as, as wrong. So it's only going to be used in, in that instance, and then in the case of emergencies.
Uh, one last question, ma'am, Sheriff. Can we, can we develop a policy that kind of puts in some guidelines in, in writing, uh, along the lines of what you discussed, so that another added sense of a guardrail to make sure that, you know, we're honoring our commitment that we're making here tonight, that it, it's, it's, it's not overreach, but it's, uh, within reasonfulness, uh, and clearly, uh, within the purview of the law.
Sure.
How, how often is this gonna take place?
They, uh, this contract is set up to fly it once every three years. They collect, uh, flights over the county over the course of a, a week or two. They, they fly most of this area of North Carolina, so they've already been flying, uh, many of our neighbors. In fact, they, they have a, I think, a commercial product that has less imagery. So they've probably, I think they've been flying Granville County for many years now, but at a lower resolution, and, uh, so this is just a continuation of that.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions, any comments?
Just Mr. Chairman would like to direct this to county attorney. Have you looked into all the legal issues that this may involve? And you feel comfortable?
I haven't specifically been asked to look at the legal issues involved in this, but I have looked at it and it relates to drones and other things. And I believe Mr. May has correctly stated the state of the law, that if you can see it from above, I don't think there's any expectation of privacy.
Any other questions, any other comments? If not, we entertain a motion. Do I hear a motion on the contract?
I'll make a motion that we go along with the county managers, recommending a six-year contract with Eagle View for aerial imagery services.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Do I hear a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails. And we'll move on to our next item of business, which is our planning matters. And Mr. Baker?
Can I address the board?
Yes, please.
Before that, the matter before you tonight is a special use permit involving a tower to be constructed by Duke Power Company or Duke Energy. And I just want to inform the board that I have a conflict in this matter. And Chad Essick from the law firm of Pointer Spruill is here to act as conflicts counsel. He is an attorney who practices in the area of land use, planning, development, and governmental matters, and is well-versed in these matters. He represented the county before the Board of Adjustment on this matter when Duke Energy sought a variance for the height of the tower. So at this point, or as soon as I answer any questions you have, I'll be stepping down and he'll be taking my seat and guiding the board through this process using the same type of script that we typically use in this matter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ren. Does anyone have any questions for Attorney Ren? If not, we'll take you out of the hot seat. Put him in. Do you have any... Do you have any comments you'd like to make before we start?
I do not, Ms. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. Okay. And now, Mr. Baker. Let's see, where did I start at?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry?
May I interrupt you? Can you have the Mr. Ren's replacement introduce himself again, please?
Happy to. Good evening. My name is Chad Essick. I'm a land use and zoning attorney and local government attorney with the law firm of Pointer Spruill, and stepping in tonight for Mr. Ren in place of his conflict.
Essick?
Essick, yes, sir. E-S-S-I-C-K. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next matter on the agenda is an evidentiary hearing to rule on an application for a major special use permit. And I will entertain a motion to open the hearing. Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second motion, Ms. Chairman.
All right. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? And we call this evidentiary hearing to order. Both proponents and opponents of the permit will be given an opportunity to present evidence and arguments. At this time, all those wishing to speak or present evidence for or against a proposed major special use permit, please come forward and be sworn in. Only those individuals who are sworn in will be allowed to address the board. So if you believe there's any chance you may want to present evidence in this case, please come forward at this time.
Thank you. Could you all please state your name for the record? Susan?
Barry Baker.
Caleb Jerkensen.
Joel Widmer.
Merrick Parrott.
Patrick Burdier.
Julie Ratcliffe.
Scott Smith.
Elizabeth County.
Thank you. All right. If you can get near a Bible, you can place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, or you can also affirm if you do not want to place your hand on the Bible. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and information you shall give to the Granville County Board of Commissioners shall be relevant and pertinent to the issues before the Granville County Board of Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Baker, would you give us a preliminary statement of the case?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. This, as the chair has mentioned, this is an evidentiary hearing for Burns &amp; McDonald Wireless Telecommunication Tower, major special use permit application, proposed for property on Blue Bell Lane. And the tax map is 088-902-797617. The tower is a proposed replacement for an existing tower for Duke Energy. The Granville County Board of Adjustment granted a height variance for the proposed tower on November 28, 2023. I want to state that all public notices have been accomplished for tonight's hearing. And we also have the county's wireless consultant here. Again, this is on Blue Bell Lane. It's right around a mile northeast of the town of Stem. You will see a Google map that shows the existing Duke Tower. The existing Duke Tower is 430 feet. What is proposed for the replacement is 404 feet. It does comply with the Granville County Airport Height Ordinance. It is a guide tower. There are guide wires that would be placed on the property. And again, it is 404 feet. I will go over some recommended conditions from Cityscape and then have Mrs. Susan Raybold speak as to the report. One of the recommended conditions is that prior to permitting, the applicant shall submit final construction drawings for the facility, which shall be certified by a North Carolina professional engineer. Prior to permitting, the applicant shall submit the NEPA. This is, that's the National Environmental Protection Act, a federal act in Section 106 reports. At the county's discretion, the tower antennas and all ancillary equipment mounted on the tower shall be painted a color deemed least visually obtrusive. It is not recommended that the tower be painted anything other than the steel gray-silver that is how it's manufactured. If a valid complaint of interference to an authorized county or municipal public safety radio frequency is found to be associated with Verizon's or Duke Energy's installation at the proposed facility, the applicant shall comply with all applicable rules regarding radio frequency interference as mandated by the FCC, Federal Communications Commission, and in accordance with the FCC's Best Practice Guide, and the applicant shall demonstrate compliance with the county's noise control and abatement regulations in the presence of a county representative by running all equipment, including the generator, and taking sound level measurements. In our zoning ordinance, the maximum decibel at the property line is 65 decibels for all land uses. And I do want to introduce Mrs. Susan Raybold, who will talk to you tonight about Cityscape's report.
Thank you, Barry. Good evening. I'm Susan Raybold with Cityscape Consultants. We have reviewed the application and all the supporting documentation that was submitted, and I will walk you through our analysis. We have looked at the application first through the code requirement for citing priorities. And since this application for this tower is a little different than some of the other ones whereby, as Barry mentioned, there's an existing facility at this location, and Duke Power is not, Duke Energy, excuse me, is not able to continue to use that tower. They need to remove it and replace it with a new tower. And so it's not quite the same as coming in with a brand-new tower where there's nothing on that property presently. But we did look at the vicinity of the existing tower, and there are no existing towers once this one is removed at the elevation that they need for their equipment on which to use. So there are no tall structures that they can co-locate on. There are no attachments that they can go on to that are like a silo or a chimney stack. And a concealed freestanding facility would be very difficult to do for a tower of this height. And there are no public properties that they could go on in this immediate vicinity. And so they are coming in with a request for citing priority eight, which is a new non-concealed freestanding support structure on property other than county-owned in the vicinity. And we agree that that is the most appropriate citing priority that they meet, and that the closest tower to them is a US Cellular Tower. It's approximately 1.3 miles to the south. It's too short because it's 195 feet, and it's too far from where they want to go. They own this property. It's reasonable that they remove the tower that they have and then put in the new one. So we support that. We recommend that you support that. The height and design of this tower is being designed to accommodate eight elevations for their proposed equipment. And then after they use those eight elevations throughout the height of the tower, they will still have three other locations available on the tower for co-location of commercial wireless providers. They have also accommodated commercial wireless providers in the ground compound by having enough space for the additional equipment that they may need in the future. They have completed their requirements for the FAA, and they have been issued the proper area nautical study approvals from the FAA. They will be installing a dual lighting system, which will be a white strobe by day that eliminates the need to paint the tower orange and white. And they will be using a red strobe by night so that it won't be as intensive during the nighttime with a white strobe. They have submitted RF compliance statements, and they have addressed concerns for RF emission exposure. And with regards to their setbacks, the code requires a one-to-one setback, and they... So the proposed tower with the pertinences at the top is 404 feet, and their site plan demonstrates that they are at least 404 feet from all property lines. Their access and parking to the ground compound is through a new driveway that is being cut from Blue Bell Road, and it is shown on Sheet C12 of the site drawings. And it is a 26-foot-wide accessway that goes from the beginning of the street to the compound. And the compound will be fenced by an eight-foot-high fence with three strands of fob wire at the top. They are also going to use fabric to help screen the compound. They're using existing vegetation and brush that is parallel to the northeast and southern property lines. That vegetation will remain undisturbed. They have then also shown to install additional landscaping around the fence lines that are visible from Blue Bell Road. In total, they'll be proposing to, they're proposing to install 39 American hollies that will be planted four to five feet on center, and those are shown in Figure 6 in our report. With regards to the signage, they are not going to, or they say they're not going to be using any other signage than what is necessary for the proposed site. They show some signage that identifies who the owner of the tower is, the address, the site name, and emergency contact number. They provide separate signage with regards to radio frequency notice, caution signs, a no trespassing sign, some signs related to no climbing of the tower, and some fuel signs. Based on Cityscape's review, we feel that they have met all of the standards in your code with regards to... Let me get back to my notes so I can read it. With regards to the citing priorities, the justification for the location and the height, the fencing, the signage, the access, the setbacks, and all the other supporting regulations that you have pertaining to those standards. And Barry went over with you our conditions that we just pointed out to you for consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? If not, thank you. Mr. Attorney, would you please read the instructions to the board?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The Federal Telecommunications Act allows municipalities, including counties, to regulate the placement of wireless service facilities. Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes sets out the statutory framework pursuant to which local governments can regulate wireless telecommunication facilities. Wireless facility and wireless support structure citing ordinance for the county of Granville is found in Article 9 of Chapter, excuse me, Article 9 of Chapter 32 of the Granville County Land Development Code. Section 32-572C requires a major special use permit for all new wireless support structures. Section 32-1101 of the ordinance establishes the following six standards for major special use permits. First, all applicable specific conditions pertaining to the proposed use contained in Article 3 of Chapter 32 of the ordinance will, or have been or will be satisfied. Specifically, in order to grant a special use permit to construct a new freestanding wireless support structure, the board must find that the applicant demonstrated why a site of higher priority was not selected. In order to find that the applicant demonstrated why a site of higher priority was not selected, the applicant must have demonstrated to the satisfaction of this board the reason or reasons why such a permit should be granted for the proposed site, and the hardships that would be incurred by the applicant if the permit were not granted for the proposed site. The above referenced eight orders of priority for constructing a new wireless support structure are set out in ordinance section 32-572A and was discussed by Ms. Raybold and I'm sure will be addressed by the city's, excuse me, by the applicant's team. In addition to these general requirements, the ordinance also sets out specific requirements for all new wireless support structures. Those include requirements regarding security of wireless support structures. All wireless support structures shall be located, fenced, or otherwise secured in a manner that prevents unauthorized access. Specifically, all antennas, towers, and other supporting structures, including guide wires, shall be made inaccessible to individuals and constructed or shielded in such a manner that they cannot be climbed or run into. And transmitters and telecommunications control points must be installed in a manner to be readily accessible only to persons authorized to operate or service them. Regarding signage, wireless support structures shall contain a sign no larger than four square feet to provide adequate notification to persons in the immediate area of the presence of an antenna that has transmission capabilities. The sign shall contain the names of the of an antenna that has transmission capabilities. The sign shall contain the names of the owners and operators of the facility, and emergency phone numbers, and FCC registration number if applicable. The sign shall be on the equipment shelter or shed of the applicant and be visible from the access point of the site, and must identify the equipment shelter of the applicant. The sign shall not be lighted unless the board shall have allowed such lighting or otherwise applicable provisions of law require such lighting. No other signage, including advertising, shall be permitted on any wireless support structure unless required by law. Concerning access, at a wireless support structure site, an access road, turnaround space, and parking shall be provided to assure adequate emergency and service access. Maximum use of existing roads, whether public or private, shall be made to the extent practical. Road construction shall at all times minimize ground disturbance and vegetation cutting. Road grades shall closely follow natural contours to assure minimal visual disturbance and reduce soil erosion. Concerning setbacks, all wireless support structures and broadcast facilities shall be set back from voting property lines and recorded right-ofways by the following distances: a distance equal to the height of the wireless structure, support structure, or broadcast facility tower, or structure, or use breakpoint technology as provided for in section Thirty-two dash five-seven-nine-eight A. The second requirement, access roads or entrance and exit drives are or will be sufficient in size and properly located to ensure automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow, and control and access in case of fire and emergency. The third requirement, off-street parking, loading, refuse, and other service areas are located so as to be safe and convenient, allow for access in case of emergency, and to minimize economic glare, odor, and other impacts on adjoining properties in the general neighborhood. Requirement four, utilities, schools, fire, police, and other necessary public and private facilities and services will be adequate to handle the proposed use. Number five, the location and arrangement of the use on-site, screening, buffering, landscaping, and pedestrian ways harmonize with the adjoining properties and the general area and minimize adverse impact. And finally, six, the type, size, and intensity of the proposed use, including such considerations as the hours of operation and number of people who are likely to utilize or be attracted to the use, will not have significant adverse impacts on the adjoining properties or the neighborhood. In making these findings a fact, the board's decisions must be based on competent, material, and substantial evidence in the record. Substantial evidence is more than a mere scantilla. It means such relevant evidence as a reasonable mind might accept as adequate to support a conclusion. It must do more than create the suspicion of the existence of the fact to be established. A concurring vote of majority of the members of the board shall be necessary to grant a major special-use permit. If the board approves the major special-use permit, it may impose additional reasonable conditions and safeguards as may be necessary to ensure the criteria for granting such permit will be complied with and reduce or minimize any potentially injurious effect of the use on adjoining properties, the character of the neighborhood, or the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the community. Where appropriate, such conditions may include conditions, requirements that street and utility right-of-way be dedicated to the public, and that the provision be made of recreational space and facilities. Conditions and safeguards shall not include requirements for which the local government does not have the authority under statute to regulate, nor requirements for which the courts have held to be unenforceable if imposed directly by the local government. As always, a member of this board shall not participate in or vote on a special-use permit in a manner that would violate affected person's constitutional rights to an impartial decision-maker. Impermissible violations of due process include, but are not limited to, a member having a fixed opinion prior to the hearing, the matter that is not susceptible to change, undisclosed ex parte communications, a close familial business or other associational relationship with an affected person, or a financial interest in the outcome of the matter. If an objection is raised to a member's participation, and that member does not recuse himself or herself, the remaining member shall, by majority vote, rule on the objection. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. And we will now hear evidence from the applicant. And a case must be presented by a licensed attorney for the applicant. Witnesses must be sworn, I think everyone's been sworn in already, and only relevant and competent evidence shall be heard. After each witness, the board may inquire, and opposing parties must be given an opportunity to cross-examine. Witnesses must be sworn, and only relevant and competent evidence should be heard. Yeah, yes. And are you the attorney for the applicant?
I am, yes, sir.
Okay. If you will, please state your name for the record.
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for being here tonight. My name is Merrick Parrott. I'm with the law firm Parker Poe Adams &amp; Bernstein, 301 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Can you hear me okay? Okay, perfect. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant to request this major special-use permit for this 404-foot tower. With me here tonight, representatives from Duke Energy, the proposed owner of the tower, Burns &amp; McDonald, the engineering consultant who helped put together the materials, and an expert property value witness to provide testimony on property value impacts from the project. I have a PowerPoint that I appreciate y'all preloading onto the screen. I'm going to walk through discussing the application, explaining how the facility meets the county's requirements, and that it complies with the six findings of fact that the county attorney just read out. If at any point you have questions, please feel free to interrupt me. First, very quickly, I'd like to thank Mr. Baker and Ms. Raybold. They've been incredibly helpful in helping us, you know, make sure the application complies with the ordinance. It's highly technical, and they've spent a lot of time and effort here tonight making sure that the application is complete before we came before you. As you've heard from Ms. Raybold, and is in the report that she put together, application's been reviewed and detailed by Cityscape and found to be complete, and Cityscape is recommending approval of the application. Before I get started, I do have a couple of hard copies that I'd like to hand up, if that's okay, and just proactively, for ease of the record, like to ask that all materials for the application, including the items in your agenda packet, and these two hard copies be entered into the record.
Is there any objection? If none, the application documents and testimony are entered into the evidence?
Okay. Again, the purpose of the application is approval of a major special-use permit to replace the current aging 430-foot tower on the site with a new 404-foot non-broadcast wireless tower. And that's kind of an image of what the tower will look like. There are a lot of benefits to the community for this replacement tower. It will be part of the infrastructure required to support Duke's smart grid, which is, you know, generation plant, emergency signals, transmission, substation line communications, distribution for day-to-day storm operational technologies. So it's really critical infrastructure for Duke Energy, especially in times of emergency. It'll help minimize downtime for critical communication, utility communications. Again, the height is required to maintain line of sight for the microwave path. The new tower will provide more bandwidth to support this newer technology, contributing to a more reliable grid, et cetera. There are a lot of benefits. And as Ms. Raybold noted, there is still room on the tower for co-location for third parties, including potential telecommunications and wireless providers. Again, very quickly, you've heard this tower-specific facts. The tower will be cited on a 19.3-acre parcel, which is owned by Duke Energy. It's a 404-foot total height, 399 feet for the tower with a five-foot lightning rod. This height variance was approved by the Board of Adjustment in November of 2023 at a quasi-judicial hearing. There is a fall radius of 200 feet based on the technology, but as you heard from Ms. Raybold, again, we're in the center of a 19.3-acre parcel, so we are set back quite a good distance from the property line. It will be a guide tower. Again, the tower can accommodate three additional commercial wireless providers. In addition to Duke's equipment and location, it's roughly in the middle portion of the county, just north of STEM. Here is the site layout, just an aerial of the site. Again, you'll see it's kind of sited in the middle of this 19.3-acre parcel. And it's a little bit difficult to see, but again, we have noted that there is an existing 430-foot tower. It's just kind of the northwest, and we'll see it a little bit better right there. Here's an aerial where you can see the existing tower. Again, it's an aging tower. It was built in 1981, and the new tower is needed for the new technology. The replacement tower, again, is going to be 26 feet shorter than the current tower. The current tower's 430 feet. The new one will be 404 feet. And again, it's much more set back into the parcel rather than right there on Blue Bell Lane. Here's a conceptual site plan, again, showing the new access road, and then the tower location. The gray area right there, the gray areas are the landscaping that we're proposing to add. Here's a detail of it showing where the specific plantings will be. Again, as Ms. Raybold said, there is existing vegetation on the north, the east, and the south. So these are in addition to the existing vegetation. And we did include a fencing insert there, showing the fabric that Ms. Raybold mentioned as well. So I'm going to very briefly go over the six findings of fact that the board has to make in order to decide on a special-use permit. We've included some of our competent materials, substantial evidence on each of the six slides, so we're just going to walk through it very quickly. Finding one, again, all applicable specific conditions pertaining to the use have been or will be satisfied. You've heard a lot here tonight about setbacks and, you know, all of the details in the ordinance. We have met or will meet all of them. It's been addressed in the application narrative, the supporting documents, and in the Cityscape report. Again, Cityscape reviewed for compliance with Article Nine, Section Thirty-two. Findings are outlined in their report, and they recommend approval of the facility. Finding two, about access roads, this is going to be an unmanned site, so there aren't going to be people coming in and out every day. There is expected to be minimal traffic flow. There is, you know, access space provided for fire and other police to enter and exit the site in case of emergency. Finding three, about service areas, again, it's an unmanned tower. We're not expecting off-street parking, loading, refuse, or other service areas. And the site is going to adhere to the access road and parking requirements in section Thirty-two, five-seventy-three. Finding four, about county services, including utilities, schools, fire, police, et cetera, will be adequate to handle the proposed use. Not to beat a dead horse, it's an unmanned site. Won't have an impact on public facilities. And again, the access road is designed to accommodate police and fire. Finding a fact, five, that the location and arrangement of the use on-site will be in harmony with adjoining properties in the general area and minimize adverse impact. We have adhered to the landscaping and screening requirements in the ordinance. Again, the use of existing vegetation on-site on three sides, as well as planted vegetation. We are significantly set back now from Blue Bell Lane, again, shorter than the existing tower. And we do have here tonight, as I mentioned earlier, an expert witness on property value, Mr. Scott Smith. He's an MAI-designated real estate appraiser. I handed out his report a bit earlier, and I'd like to ask him to come up and give his expert opinion on findings of fact five and six, since his report covers both.
Good evening. My name's Scott Smith. I am, as she said, MAI-designated real estate appraiser, and I prepared an impact study in connection with this Blue Bell site and this proposed tower. As part of the impact study, three separate properties were examined to determine if any negative impact to residential property value or land value could be attributed to the proximity of a tower that is proximate to residentially zoned properties. Ample data was gathered. The improved residential properties were in tract developments with a high degree of uniformity, and the primary variable between the data analyzed was proximity to an existing tower. The findings from the research contained in the report were, number one, the location and arrangement of the use on the site, screening, buffering, landscaping, and pedestrian ways harmonized with adjoining properties in the general area, and minimize adverse impact. The second finding was the type, size, and intensity of the proposed use, including such considerations as the hours of operation, and number of people who are likely to utilize and be attracted to the use, will not have a significant adverse impact on adjoining properties or the neighborhood. And our third conclusion was, based on the paired data presented and analyzed herein, there's no indication that the proximity of the proposed communications tower will have an adverse impact on property values. Given the lack of, given that the surrounding area is sparsely populated, is south of a rail corridor, lacks municipal utilities for significant residential expansion, and will continue to be buffered by significant tree growth and vegetation buffers, there's no market basis to support a conclusion of a negative impact on surrounding residential property values. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other witnesses?
No, sir. That's it.
Okay.
And I would ask if it's okay that Mr. Scott Smith be tendered as an expert witness in real property valuation.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? Mr. Smith did submit a report, correct?
Correct. It is the Report of Integra Realty Services that I handed up earlier tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions. Have the residents of that particular area been notified of the proposed change in the tower?
We did hold a community meeting in accordance with the county's ordinance.
When and where was that at?
Sure. And it's part of our application. It is, tab Q of the application is our open house material. It was held in November of 2024. I can find the specific date if needed, but it was in November of 2024.
Were there any residents at that meeting, or what was your turnout for that meeting?
Yes, sir. Again, part of our application, tab Q, has a sign-in sheet that we had at the community meeting. And a few residents came, I think, three, four neighbors. Mr. Baker and Ms. Raybold were there, and then a few neighbors. At high level, it was more questions, more a request for additional wireless and telecom service.
Okay. And I live very near this tower, and I'm familiar with some of these people that live there and have property there. But, and I, matter of fact, helped on the project to build that initial tower when I was about eighteen years old.
Wow.
But I've never been back there since. Many times I helped when Mr. Buddy Black actually owned that farm and did this with Duke Power at the time. Does the tower emit any noise, a buzzing, humming, anything of that nature?
No, but I'll have Mr. Joel Whitmer with Burns &amp; McDonald give a little more detail.
Okay.
Hello. My name's Joel Whitmer. To answer your question about whether it would emit a noise, none of the equipment that will be installed on it will emit anything that a normal human would be able to hear. These are frequency ranges that only the equipment would be able to detect and parse. Now, whether or not the wind coming through and, like, the weather-related phenomenon, I couldn't guarantee would.
I understand that. I'm talking about far as humans go. How about animals and livestock?
I could not make a comment on that.
Okay. What is the environmental impact, if any, on the changing of one tower to another? Would there be any significant environmental impact to that area?
So we do an environmental impact based off the FCC's requirement. That's part of that NEPA study that will be submitted. Part as this is granted, we will be submitting that with this application.
Okay. Will this tower interfere with any other cell phone use, or police radio, or anything else that's in that particular area? or anything else that's in that particular area?
All the equipment in the tower will be installed and is regulated by the FCC. So any licenses that are free, or any frequencies that Duke is operating that are licensed, there will be a frequency coordination done to make sure there's no interference. And any unlicensed can just operate normally.
Okay. And I see in your proposal that T-Mobile has already made a request to have a part of that tower at about 250 feet and you have space for two more probably cell phone providers. Would that, would that increase the cell phone coverage for people that live in that area?
For whatever.
If they, if it goes through.
If a carrier decided to install equipment on the tower, that would provide better coverage for that specific carrier.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions?
I do have, I'm, I'm not quite through with my presentation. If you don't mind, it's okay. We do just very briefly on finding of fact number six. Again, the last finding of fact, the type, size, intensity of the proposed use, including considerations like hours of operation, number of people to use the site, won't have adverse impacts on adjoining properties. You just heard Mr. Scott Smith's professional opinion on impact to adjoining properties or the neighborhood. And in addition, again, we're replacing an aging tower. So the use isn't changing. Just the new tower is going to be shorter and more setback from the road. Again, it will remain an unmanned use. The proposed tower is going to be made of galvanized steel as shown on the site plan. Galvanized steel is consistent with the existing tower to be removed, which is also galvanized steel. Galvanized steel is industry standard for towers of this type. As such, not, it is not expected to adversely impact neighboring properties. And there's no evidence to the contrary, given other examples of telecommunications towers throughout North Carolina. And then finally, as we've discussed here tonight, the cityscape report included five recommended conditions that the board could consider on putting on the major special use permit. The applicant has reviewed and agreed to four of the five conditions that we've listed here on this slide. Condition three from cityscape's report, which was, "At the county's discretion, the tower antennas and all other ancillary equipment mounted on the tower shall be painted a color deemed the least visually obtrusive." Respectfully, the applicant believes that condition's unnecessary. Again, the proposed tower will be made of galvanized steel as shown on the site plans, which is industry standard. To paint a 404-foot guide tower would be prohibitively expensive, potentially damaging to the surrounding area, disruptive to follow-on inspections no lo, and is no longer industry standard. And we would ask that the county approve the major special use permit with the four conditions listed on this slide from the applicant's presentation and not include this fifth condition requiring painting. And I believe, I heard Mr. Baker say earlier that the staff was not recommending any painted condition, you know, other than the gray galvanized steel that we are proposing.
Thank you. Do you have any further witnesses or any?
No further witnesses, happy to answer any other questions. And if there are any members of the audience here this week would just respectfully request a bit of time to answer any questions or offer any rebuttal.
Do we have any questions? If not, if there, if there is not any objection and if none of the applicant's documents and testimony will be entered into evidence. Are there any individuals who wish to present evidence against a special use permit? If you will come forward, state your name. I believe you already have been sworn in.
It's June Thomas. And I just wanted, I've got the original contract. That used to be CP and L. But it's forever and ever. So the only thing they can do is a tower. And they have to keep the road up forever and ever, whoever owns it. So I just wanted to give y'all a copy of this.
Okay. Okay. Will you take this?
And if I may, we, we, the applicant have not seen a copy of it. Would just like to, would just like to look over it if that's okay.
Of course. Chair Goode. Go ahead. For clarity, can we, can we have her repeat what she just said? Because it was very fast and I'm not really sure that.
Yeah. If the witness could also to maybe state her address for the record as well. So we know the proximity of where she lives to the proposed site.
I live right beside him. And I've been there forever. I'm Mr. Black's daughter. But also, I'm worried about the animals, the farm animals of the frequency, if it's going to aggravate them in the wildlife. I mean, bears come up behind my house. I don't, I like to see them. So that, I'm not sure. I mean, I hate the microwave towers, but I don't know about what they're going to put up.
Appreciate the, you know, attention and the, the participation. You know, we, we want to be a good neighbor and want to hear. And we're happy to continue having conversations. I believe on a very quick review, what the document was passed up is, it's potentially the original easement that does, you know, from the 1970s that talks about maintaining the road. And, you know, I have a representative from Duke Energy here tonight. Again, just to reaffirm that there is obligations, Duke has obligations under portions of the road to maintain the road and they, they do so and will continue to do so.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Bernier. I'm a senior project manager with Duke Energy. My team replaces these towers, the end-of-life towers across our entire footprint. We do South Carolina, North Carolina, Florida, the Midwest. So the concerns about the road, this is not the first older easement-type document that we've been asked to review or, or to maintain roads that, that we've committed to in the past. So as part of the construction process, obviously the road, you know, may get impacted. Our intent would be to document the road beforehand and leave the road all the way from the, the main paved road all the way to the site in as good of condition or better condition. We just did this in Six Mile, Pickens County. The, the residents came to the same public hearing. We committed to that county to do the same thing. We left their road. All the residents are, you know, very, very happy. It goes up a mountain. We returned all their water breaks. We, we actually paved a good portion of the road at the base where, where our trucks, you know, admittedly so, had damaged the road. And then we got at the end of the project, they were left a, a better road. And we commit in this case, at the end of construction, to have as good or better of a road for the, for the residents all the way down to the tower site.
Is, is the road currently maintained?
I, I, I'm unsure.
Okay.
As part of the replacement project, I, I run, I just run across this quite often that we, we need to rebuild roads.
Yeah. Sir, are there pictures for documentation taken after this that are turned over to our county planning department?
Yeah, we can do that as well. What we won't, we'll do, as soon as we get the building permit, then we'll kind of go document all the as-built conditions. That way we can document what's there and what, what, what we leave at the end of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, based on the information we just received, can I ask the attorney another question? Based on the update and the equipment being placed on the tower, have there been any reports or are there any reason to believe that it would be, have an environmental impact on, on animals and/or livestock?
No, and again, as you heard from Mr. Whitmer with Burns and McDonald, there will be an environmental assessment and there's no impact to wildlife from the tower.
I apologize, I may have missed this. What is the lifespan of this tower going forward?
Also a question we get all the time as well. So the tower, this, the original tower built in the eighties. A lot of our towers were built in the sixties. They were meant to be 20 to 30-year assets. Our, our group, as we're replacing these, we build them to the highest TIA standards, which is regulatory class risk category three, which is critical infrastructure. These are intended to be 50-year towers.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? All right, and.
If, if I may give just a very brief closing, if, if we're done and the board's ready to deliberate. Thank you. Appreciate the time here tonight. Again, just very briefly, the presentation and expert witness testimony by Mr. Smith has shown that the applicant meets all applicable regulations of the county's ordinance. You've heard competent material, substantial evidence on the record from the applicant, including expert witness testimony on each of the six findings of fact. As the county attorney read at the beginning of the hearing, quasi-judicial decisions have to be made on competent material, substantial evidence. North Carolina law says things like generalized speculations or concerns, fears, without supporting evidence, is not competent material, substantial evidence on the record. Based on this, we request that the board issue the major special use permit subject to the four conditions requested by the applicant as listed on slide 16 of the applicant's PowerPoint, which is still up on the board here tonight. Thank you again, really appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Do the members of the board have any more questions? If there are no further questions, then we'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. Do I have a motion to close the hearing? Move to close, Mr. Chairman. Do I hear a second?
Second.
You have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed likewise. Ayes have it, our hearing is closed. Mr. Attorney, would you please summarize the evidence that has been presented to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight you heard evidence from Mr. Baker as well as Ms. Raybold with the, with the county concerning the proposed project. The existing tower is 430 feet. The proposed tower to replace will be 404 feet. The, Ms. Raybold also testified regarding the siting priorities that no existing towers were at elevation that could be used by Duke Energy and there was nothing that they could attach to. There was a US Cellular Tower 1.3 miles away, but it was too short. And Ms. Raybold testified that she agreed this was the most appropriate site under those requirements. There was testimony also regarding the height and design of the tower. The proposed tower will have three locations for co-location. They've completed the FAA requirements and obtained necessary approvals and submitted the RF compliance statement. The site plan testimony was also provided by Ms. Raybold that the site plan shows compliance with all setback. That testimony was also provided by the applicant and their, its representatives. Testimony was provided regarding access, a new driveway from Blue Bell Road with 20-foot, 20-foot width access. Testimony was provided regarding the security fencing that would be provided as well as the existing vegetation that would be maintained as well as 39 additional American hollies that would be planted. Again, the applicant provided testimony of, on all those topics that I just mentioned as well as regarding minimal traffic flow to the site, that it is an unmanned tower and would adhere to all the access and parking requirements. The applicant requested that can, four of the five conditions were acceptable to the applicant minus the one condition regarding the, the painting of the tower. So if the board is inclined to make a motion to approve, you need to clarify which conditions you would apply to the special use permit. You heard testimony from Mr. Scott Smith, the MAI appraiser, who was certified as an expert witness by the board regarding his impact study that demonstrated that using paired data analysis, that in his expert opinion, the proposed project will not adversely impact the property values. And there was no market data in his review to suggest adverse impacts on surrounding property values. You heard testimony or from one individual who was opposed to the application that presented a, a document to you regarding an old easement as well as provided some of her opinions, although not expert as to or concerns regarding impacts on potential animals. The applicant rebutted that testimony with testimony that there would not be any impact and that a NEPA study would need to be done prior to the issuance of any permits that would address those issues. So that's a summary of the testimony that you heard tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With all due respect, I believe you misquoted, it should be, the old tower was 430 and it's going to 404. You stated 404 to 430.
That was, I apologize, you are correct. Yes, it's going from 430 to 404, a 26-foot reduction in the height. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank, thank you. And does anyone who has been sworn in tonight object to the attorney's summary of the evidence? We, we can't hear you, ma'am. And what is your objection to the attorney's? The microphone, please.
Okay, now can you hear me? I thought I had a big mouth enough for that. The, the fellow that said about the animals, he said he didn't know. He didn't say it wouldn't. He said he didn't know.
My apologies. I was referencing the testimony from Ms. Parrott that indicated that there would not be any impact on the livestock animals and that there would be additional environmental studies that were done.
Yeah, but one of them said they didn't know.
Okay. Ms. Sombert, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Sombert, may I ask you a question? May, may I ask you a question? Are, are you in, in opposition to this tower?
No, I just want them to realize only they, they can only have a tower. They cannot use that land for anything else. There can't be a junkyard, can't be anything else. They can't put a house on it, just a tower. And they have to maintain the road. And I hope it does not affect our animals.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the clarification.
Has there been a, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Has there been an issue in the, in the current tower with that happening?
No, not down in my, I'm, I live down in the bottom. So I'm hoping all those microwaves go over top of me.
I understand.
Yeah, I'm hoping they shoot on out.
But the concerns you're raising, my question is, the concerns you're raising, are they a, are they happening now with the current tower?
No, but, you know, with the new one, I don't know what it is. So I just, I'm worried about the animals, you know?
Thank you, thank you. All right. Now the floor is open for the board members to discuss the application as a whole before we move into discussions and vote on each required finding of fact. Anyone have anything to say? Anyone have any?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, you, you mentioned something about the painting of the, we need some additional guidance regarding the painting of the galvanized. Can you, can you explain that more clearly?
Yeah, I think what I understood was that there was five recommended conditions in the, in the report from cityscape. The applicant has agreed to four of the five, but has requested that the condition number three regarding painting of the tower be removed since, in their opinion, that's unnecessary since their site plan already requires that to be galvanized steel and they have no intent to do anything other. So, you know, I think it's up to the board to decide if that is acceptable to remove that condition.
Is, is Mr. Baker allowed to address that?
Sure, yeah.
I would agree that it would be galvanized steel. Uh, that's what the color of most, my, um, excuse me, most cell towers are, unless it were camouflaged and it's not camouflaged.
Thank you, I just want a clarification so when we go to statement of fact, then we could address it.
I just want to address real quickly on that, we're not recommending that it be painted. We just identified that it's at your discretion. Cityscape doesn't comment on the aesthetics in the community because each community's characteristics are different. We, we leave that up to you, so I just wanted to be clear, we are not recommending it be painted. Sort of a disclosure that it's at your discretion.
Okay, any further discussion, any more questions? All right, if everyone's good, we'll move on. And now we'll, uh, uh, address the each required, uh, finding of fact. Uh, Mr. Attorney, would you read the first required finding of fact?
Yes, sir. In order to grant a major special use permit to construct a new freestanding wireless support structure, the board must find that all the applicable specific conditions pertaining, pertaining to the proposed use contained in chapter thirty-two of the ordinances have or will be satisfied. These requirements include but are not limited to those requirements set out in the ordinance section thirty-two dash five seventy-two and ordinance section thirty-two dash five seventy-three, and which are further described in the instruction handout that's been provided to you.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the required finding of fact. Does the board believe there is competent and substantial evidence to support that finding? If so, please identify that specific evidence for the record. Does anyone concur with the attorney's findings? Is there any other discussion as to the evidence supporting the first finding of fact? If not, then we'll entertain a motion either for or against finding the first finding of fact.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the first finding of fact.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, motion carries. Mr. Attorney, would you read the second required finding of fact?
Yes, sir. Second required finding of fact, asset, access roads or entrance and exit drives are or will be sufficient in size and properly located to ensure automotive and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic flow, and control and access in case of fire or other emergency.
Okay, you've heard the required finding of fact. Does the board believe there is competent and substantial evidence to support that finding? If so, please identify that specific evidence for the record. Do you concur with the attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I do, and I think the evidence provided on page one twenty-six, uh, provides the facts to support, um, that that evidence is met, that standard is met.
Okay, it, is there any other discussion as to evidence supporting the second finding of fact? If not, I will entertain a motion either for or against finding of the second finding of fact.
Think a motion we accept?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? We'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, motion carries. We have approved the second finding of fact. Mr. Attorney, would you read the third required finding of fact?
Yes, sir, the third finding of fact. Off-street parking, loading, refuse, and other service areas are located so as to be safe and convenient, allow for access in case of emergency, and to minimize economic glare, odor, and other impacts on adjoining properties in the general neighborhood.
You've heard the required finding of fact. Does the board believe there is competent and substantial evidence to support that finding?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Based on the testimony, evidence given here by the, uh, attorney and the people with, uh, Duke Power and the citizens of the community voicing their concerns, I agree with the attorney's.
All right, is there any other discussion as to evidence supporting the third finding of fact? Then I'll entertain a motion either for or against finding of the third finding of fact.
I'll make a motion to accept the third finding of fact.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is any discussion? If not, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, we have accepted the third required finding of fact. Mr. Attorney, would you read the fourth required finding of fact?
The fourth finding, uh, required finding of fact, that utilities, schools, fire, police, and other necessary public and private facilities and services will be adequate to handle the proposed use.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you've heard the required finding of fact. Does the board believe there is competent and substantial evidence to support that finding? If so, please identify that specific evidence for the record. Does anyone concur with the?
I concur with the attorney's finding.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion as to evidence supporting the fourth finding of fact? If not, we'll entertain a motion either for or against finding the fourth finding of fact.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the fourth finding of fact as read, sir.
Thank you, and we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. Attorney, would you read the fifth required finding of fact?
Yes, sir. The fifth finding of fact, that the, that the location and arrangement of the use on the site, screening, buffering, landscaping, and pedestrian ways harmonize with adjoining properties in the general area and minimize adverse impact.
Thank you. You've heard the required finding of fact. Does the board believe there is competent and substantial evidence to support that finding?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do based on, uh, testimony given tonight so that, uh, Duke, uh, Power just holds to their evidence that they will not do anything that will be intrusive to the other homeowners and landowners in the area.
Thank you. Is there other discussion as to the evidence supporting the fifth finding of fact?
Yes, I'll second that with the report from Mr. Scott Smith, MAI, that's within the record.
Okay. And now we'll entertain a motion either for or against finding the fifth finding of fact.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the fifth finding of fact.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, motion carries. Mr. Attorney, would you read the sixth required finding of fact?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you. You've heard the required finding of fact. Does the board believe there is competent and substantial evidence to support that finding?
Mr. Chair, I, I do.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on as to evidence supporting the sixth finding of fact? Uh, we'll entertain a motion either for or against finding the sixth finding of fact.
I make a motion to accept the findings of fact for the sixth, uh, requirement.
Second motion.
And we, we have a second. Any discussion? Then we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, motion carries. And the board has voted in support of each required finding of fact. Is there anything else to discuss as it relates to this application for special use, uh, for major special use permit? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve or deny the major special use permit. But Chairman, I'll motion that we approve the, the application of, of, of the application.
Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Mr. Chairman, um, can we just clarify on the motion to approve the special use permit with which conditions of the five? Was it the, are we removing the third condition? To, uh, so I guess the motion would be to approve the special use permit with the conditions identified by staff, uh, but removing condition number three regarding the painting? Is that right?
Right. Okay, and that's, you want to submit amendment to the motion?
Amendment to the motion.
Okay, and we, do we still have a second?
I will second that based on the motion that we remove condition three. We approving conditions one, two, four, and five from Cityscape.
Okay. All right, so we have a, a motion, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, we have approved the major special use permit. And thank you. And, uh... Now what? Yeah. All right. JCPC? Yeah, we'll let Jim get back in his seat. All right. We want to thank everyone for coming here for this and, uh, thank you, Jim, you're back in your seat. And, uh... And, and to, uh, uh, attorney that's sent in for us tonight, I hope you enjoyed your vacation because it's over with, you're back at work. Thank you, we appreciate you being here. All right, now we move right on to item number sixteen in our agenda, which is appointments and the, uh, JCPC, which is on page three forty of our packet. Yes, go right ahead. Yes. And this is to make appointments, reappointments to the Gravel County Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Council. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, JCPC, assesses youth needs in Gravel County focused on status offenders. It helps plan and oversee community-based alternatives to training schools and delinquency prevention programs. JCPC also promotes awareness, evaluates program effectiveness, and identifies ongoing needs to improve outcomes for local youth. Gina Raymond, I believe is how you pronounce it, juvenile defender council member, has resigned and recommended Attorney Dietrich McMillan as her replacement. Uh, McMillan recognized for advocacy in the legal aid ledger, brings valuable expertise in juvenile justice, and the board is asked to consider her nomination.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that's a he, uh, Dietrich, is it a woman or a man?
It would typically be a, a man's name, but it is in fact a woman.
Okay, I stand corrected. Um, after, I, I serve as the liaison for the county on that committee.
Okay.
And after discussion with, uh, uh, Mr. Cruz earlier today, we, I would like to nominate, uh, Ms. McMillan for the, uh, replacement for the juvenile defender for the JCPC.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint a second. Do, uh, hear any objections? If not, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, motion carries. And that's, that's the only appointment we had with the JCPC, is that? Okay, thank you. All right, and now we got the, um, uh, library board. And the purpose is to make appointments, reappointments to the Gravel County Library System Board of Trustees. Excuse me, the function and duties of the Board of Trustees of the Gravel County Library System are those that set forth in the general statutes of the state of North Carolina. They include but are not limited to the appointment of a director of libraries, the adoption of policies, rules, and regulations for the governance of the library in the best interest of the citizens of the community. The authorization of the, of sound fiscal policies and adoption and amendment as needed of the annual budget. As citizens, they advise the library administration on services to fulfill the library needs of the community, represent the library to the community, and advance support of the library among funding authorities. The term of Byron Goff, District C, District Two seat expired January twenty twenty-five. The term of Juanita Rogers, District Four seat expired January twenty twenty-five. And the District Five seat is vacant with unfulfilled term expiring in January twenty twenty-six. Do we have any?
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Goff just the other day. He is a regular member, he does attend the meetings. Uh, he's an active member and I would like, and he would like to, uh, be reappointed. And at this point, I would like to reappoint or nominate Mr. Goff for another term.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Goff. Is there any questions, comments on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, Mr. Mr. Goff is, uh, uh, appointed for another term. And District Four seat?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the reappointment of Juanita Rogers.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Juanita Rogers to District Four seat. Is there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, motion carries. And the District Five seat is vacant. Mr. Ray, Mr. May, do you have a?
I do not, but we're advertising. And what I would like to do though, Mr. Chair, if I could, is I'd like to nominate for another board that is not on the agenda, with your permission.
Yes, please.
I'd like to nominate Desiree Decker from District Five, from Creedmoor, for the animal control.
I'll second that nomination.
And this is for animal control?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, Mr. May has made a motion and Mr. Willford has seconded it, is there any discussion, any questions? If not, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it, motion carries. And that pretty much completes our business unless we've got anything else to take care of right now. Yeah, all right, we'll move on to, um, our reports, our county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing for tonight.
Ah, okay, thank you. And our county attorney's report?
Nothing for tonight.
Thank you. And we have, uh, presentation by our board members, Mr. Williford.
Nothing for tonight.
All right, Mr. Griffin?
Uh, just a couple of things. I, along with several other commissioners, uh, attended at South Gravel, I believe it's the Spark, uh, exposition they had to students. One of the students actually came up with a product, incorporated a business, named all the staff, management, did all the work, including advertising, finances. Uh, and all those young people are really gonna be big entrepreneurs and add to our community in just a few years. As a matter of fact, they're going to Florida to compete in the regional, uh, uh, competition. And so I just want to applaud them and, and wish them the best. Uh, the last thing that I have tonight is, uh, this month is National Child Abuse and Adoption Month. Uh, if you're not aware, Gravel County had over three hundred cases of abuse last year in our county. That's a growing concern. Uh, we had the, uh, pinwheel ceremony out at the Department of Social Services. And Director Tassant is doing a really good job with her staff, making some changes so that we can more, uh, investigate, uh, these instances and protect the children of our county, which are such a valuable asset and commodity to us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Uh, Mr., uh, Kozart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no report tonight.
Uh, thank you. And Mr. May?
No report tonight, sir.
Okay. Do you have anything? No report, okay. All right. Commissioner Karen is not with us tonight. And Commissioner Jay?
I will report if you'd like to report.
I got caught off guard with that one. And I don't have anything further. Is there any need for a closed session tonight? There's not, okay. And now, we have one other matter to come before us, and that is the National Association of County is voting delicate and alternate. And can I make a nomination?
I'll second.
That's just what I had in my mind. Yeah.
Oh. I took things out of order, out of context. But I believe we have a motion to nominate...
I move that Commissioner Jay be our NACO voting nominee.
We have a formal nomination. An informal second. Is there any discussion? You can't say anything. We'll go to the vote. All those in favor, Commissioner Jay? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I don't think we have any opposition. If you want to say nay, you can. All those opposed. Okay, we've had our fun now. Thank you, Commissioner Jay. Thank you. Are there any other matters that come for us tonight? All right. If I don't... Not hearing any more matters, then we'll... I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second in two places. I don't think there's any discussion on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or bye. There's no opposition. We'll adjourn. Thank you all.